I know someone.
I got a registered speaker, but yeah, five point on the, one of the votes. Five point four.
I'd like to call a meeting to order. Everybody please stand for the prayer. Dear God, today's session opens, we pray that your presence will be before us and everyone who serves in this decision-making process of our city. We pray for direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day the wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city and make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Thank you. Now, the pleasure to leave you to the flag.
Pleasure to leave you to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, indivisible, just as it is.
Thank you. Clerk, please call a roll.
Counselor Cirillo.
Here.
Counselor Conway.
Here.
Counselor Elliott.
Here.
Counselor Kennedy.
Here.
Counselor Leahy.
Here.
Counselor Mercia.
Here.
Counselor Millenazzo.
Here.
Counselor Noon.
Here.
Mayor Samaras.
Here.
That's nine present.
Thank you. I believe we have some moments of silence. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber for Kathleen Kay M. Robarge. Kay attended Lowell Public Schools and was a graduate of Lowell High School, and then she went on to Bryant and Stratton College in Boston. Kay then began, began her career at the Pollard's Department Store, which later became Lynch's Department Store. She was promoted to the Director of Human Resources. Upon the closing of Lynch's, Kay went on to work at the Lowell Gas Company as Director of Customer Accounts. Kay will be lovingly remembered by her children, Judith Hogan and her husband Ralph, her son Harold Robarge Jr., and his wife Robin, and therefore, and her four grandchildren, Patrick, Harry, Matthew, and Zachary. She will be truly missed. I'd like to offer also a moment of silence in darkened chamber for John Jack Brady, beloved husband of 52 years to his wife Catherine. As a young lad, he shined shoes and delivered the record American newspaper. He worked at various racetracks in New England and became a jockey until he literally outgrew the saddle. Jack was a New England Golden Glove Open Champ and an NEA U Champion, and he also fought professionally as a welterweight. Jack was inducted into the New England Boxing Hall of Fame in 1992. He was a longtime member of the Long Meadow Golf Club. Jack founded and was President of the Gaelic American Club in Lowell since 1989. Besides his wife Catherine, he leaves behind his sons John and Gerald, his daughter Mary, and her, and his loving grandson Patrick. He will be truly missed by his Gaelic family, his many lifelong friends, relatives, and all those who knew him. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in darkened chamber in memory of the nearly 3,000 people killed in September 11, 2001. I'd offer a moment of silence as well for all those who have passed away since our last council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Thank you. Darkness Chambers, please. Thank you. I'd also, what I need at this point is a motion to take an announcement out of order. We have Mr. Gordon Helm here to talk about Welcoming Week.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to suspend the rules and allow taking something out of order for Welcoming Week in Lowell, and Gordon Helm will present that.
Second by Ms. Noon. Thank you. Helm, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome for Welcoming Week.
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, ladies and gentlemen, good evening. Tonight, I'm here alone, but I have a whole coalition behind me. And I'm here just quickly to make a quick remarks about Welcoming Week Lowell. This group came out of a coalition that was called the Refugee Immigrant Coalition. And what we are just about to do is that we cannot plan this event without asking for your blessings, your attendance. Most of immigrants and refugees that have come here, including myself, besides the luggage that we come with, we do have gifts, talents, and that is what we would like to celebrate. So we are here tonight just to present this to you, to ask for your blessings, to make sure that these activities that we are about to celebrate will go on and on and on. And I would like to thank you so much for that.
Mr. Helm, the parade will be when? The kickoff parade?
The kickoff is this Friday. We are going to kick it off with a flag celebration, and it's going to from right in front of the City Hall, and this is from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. on this Friday.
And the, and the week that will be involved, the dates for the week?
Yes, and following that, we have a series of events that I have a flyer here with me that I would like to present that to you, and it has a series of events.
The days, can you just announce the days of the week?
So we have the Welcoming Art Panels, which is going to be the Friday, the 14th, is all day event. We have a culture exchange dialogue, which is taking place on the South Common Park, and that is Saturday, 15, from 1:00 to 5:00 p.m. We have immigrant history walk, which is also taking place on Sunday, the 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. Following that, we have a conversation cafe is going to be the Pollard Memorial Library, and that is from Monday, the 17th, from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And, can I go on?
Just, yes, quickly, sure.
Okay. So the, and the conclusion will be the suitcase stories in the neighborhood, and that is going to be the 20th, the 23rd of September, from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions from the council? Thank you, Mr. Helm.
Thank you.
Next, we have the minutes of the zoning subcommittee, acceptance of the minutes of the subcommittee of August 28th, and the City Council meeting of August 28th were accepted, they need a motion to accept and place in file by Mr. Kennedy, seconded by Ms. Mercia. Ms. Mercia, thank you. Next, we have Auditor's Business Communications for the fiscal year-to-date budget report of June series 2018. Any discussion? Counselor Elliott.
Thank you for the report. I would like to see if we could refer this to the Finance Subcommittee to have a discussion on year-to-date budget as well as FY '18 year-end. There's also an OPEC policy that I think would warrant discussion at that meeting as well.
Excuse me. So a second, so a second.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Mr. Kennedy. All right. You all set, Mr. Elliott?
Yes, thanks.
Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the auditor. Regarding the report that, that you have on the agenda this evening, on page 29, it indicates that the school department ended the fiscal year with a surplus of $90,000, right?
That is correct.
And last year, they had a surplus of $79,000, and in FY '16, the year previous, a surplus of $88,000, and in FY '15, they also had a surplus. So the school department has been ending every fiscal year with the surplus, right? At least in recent years.
Agreed, Mr. Mayor. Yes, that is correct. They do have a surplus. They do not spend more than they have under their general fund allowance and go into deficit at year-end, correct?
Okay.
Any other questions? I need a motion to accept and place in file. I'm, Mr. Millenazzo, seconded by, yes.
The motion was referred to the Finance Subcommittee.
Yes. Mr. Mayor. A motion to accept this. So I need a second from Mr. Millenazzo to accept.
Just as a point of clarification, so should we bundle this motion? Will this motion include the OPEB policy and the information coming from the manager's office regarding the fiscal year '18 year-end report as well?
No, if that's the wish of the council.
All three things, all three items.
That was a motion, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, little horse.
You want, I'm sorry, I just, you want to bundle all three? And a second by Mr. Kennedy, okay? Accepted.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
I had a question.
Yes.
On the, on the budget here. What Counselor Kennedy just mentioned, I'm a little confused here because when I take a look at the numbers, it looks like the school department has this year $222,257 surplus. Is that, am I misreading that?
Go ahead.
All right. Counselor, on page 29, under Total Education, you'll see on the bottom line for total expenses. If you move all the way to the right-hand side, you'll see under Available Budget, $90,780. That's the, the surplus, the unspent funds from their appropriation for the year.
Well, apparently, I must be looking at a different chart here because the chart that I'm looking at is up in the top, it has, let's see, wages, expenses, total, year-end surplus and budget adjustment.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
We're looking at two different reports. The report that I was referring to was the auditor's report that looks like this, but there's also a report that was put in there by Mr. Baldwin as well, and that's what you're looking at.
But how would it, I don't understand how it would conflict then with these two different reports. Is it, isn't the bottom line the same thing, is there's a surplus? I don't care what report we're looking at, I'm looking at the packet here, and one report says that there's a, there's a $222,257 surplus in the school department.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
And I'm looking at the one where it says here, the, from Connor Baldwin, Chief Financial Officer, date August 22nd, 2018, again, in the, was obviously the fiscal update, the year-end, and I'm not sure why, why it would be different.
I believe that in Mr. Baldwin's report, he has the encumbrances and the, which is the money that's been reserved but not spent, as well as the available funds listed, which gives you the $220,000 approximately of unspent funds. So $130,000 roughly has been reserved for purchases that have been made but have not yet been invoiced as of the end of the year.
Okay, so can we, well, all right, are we going to be able to get to some of these questions here as far as this report is concerned?
This is being sent, this will be sent to the Subcommittee, so you'll have plenty of opportunity to discuss every aspect of it.
Okay.
Mr. Kennedy, sorry, Mr. Kennedy, you had your hand up.
I'm all set. As long as Counselor Conway's all set, I'm all set.
Mr. Elliott.
Look, I'm happy, I'm happy to have a discussion about this, I just think it warrants a long discussion for a lot of the questions that Mr. Counselor Conway has asked, as well as the numerous questions that I have, both for FY '18 on the school and on the city side. So there are a number of recommendations that Connor has, has made relative to some outstanding items, including, you know, overtime and, you know, items cited in the memo, but if we're not at the discussion, I'm good with it. If not, I'm gonna, I'll schedule a Finance Subcommittee meeting as soon as I can, as early as members are available.
Okay. Counselor Conway, you all set with that?
Yeah, thank you, because I, again, I have many questions on that, on that report. Thank you.
Any other further discussion? Okay. Next, we go to Communication from the City Manager, motion responses. We have motion response, Lord overpass. Counselor Mercia.
Thank you. The first response was through my motion, questioning the Lord Overpass and justifying the filling in, and I did get a response, so let me just respond to the response. It says the, these are the goals of why we reached this conclusion, and the first paragraph, it says, "To alleviate vehicular traffic congestion is not the primary focus." Well, that sentence took me by complete surprise. I thought alleviating vehicular traffic congestion was a number-one priority, at least it is to me. To alleviate traffic congestion, that's not your number-one priority? And then it goes, "The split-grade design does not allow vehicular traffic to access Jackson Street." Well, if you look at the design, the design as amended after it's filled in still doesn't allow you to enter Jackson Street. It says, it says, as you go down the paragraph, it says, "The goal is to improve mobility and accessibility opportunities for the trolley system," which I don't know that we have a trolley, I don't think I've seen one lately, "and cyclists, of which currently the Lord Overpass does not adequately accommodate pedestrians and bicycle traffic." Well, I see pedestrians coming across the Lord Overpass every day, because I work right by there, and I see them coming over the Lord Overpass and they're going down to the Gallagher Terminal. I see them walking across the bridge, going down either Middlesex Street or Appleton Street. I see pedestrian traffic, so I don't know how filling that in $15 million worth to allow bicyclists and pedestrians. Pedestrian foot traffic is doing okay right now. Just extend the sidewalk down the left side of the ramp to the Hamilton Canal area, and I don't think we'd have to spend $15 million or fill in a ramp. Now, let me just take you back again. We want to take care of bicyclists coming over the Lord Overpass so they can go to the Judicial Center or whatever. So am I assuming that everybody that has a court case in the Judicial Center owns a bicycle? And I'm thinking, if that's going to be opened up, and I don't see a picture there, we're going to see like four lanes of traffic on both sides narrowed down to a snail's crawl, but for some reason, we want bicycles there. I have not yet seen a bicycle going down the highway. I have not seen pedestrian traffic going down a highway, so I don't know, I don't know. I just don't get it. I'm not saying that those people are wrong that want this, I'm just saying that I don't comprehend this. If you look at the design, and I hate to just look at it myself, so you see it right there, it, it looks like a snake that swallowed a cow. It's so wide right there, and it narrows right down where you want the traffic to flow. I, I don't see any entrance from that width going into the Hamilton Canal area except to go down Middle Street, Middlesex Street, which you could do that anyway without allevi- without filling in the Lord Overpass. Now, if you go underneath the Lord Overpass and you go over to Dutton Street, you can get into there by there. I'd say, put an entrance into that area right there. I don't know, I'm not an engineer, but I never said anything, I kind of went along with the crowd, which I probably shouldn't have done. I figured, I don't hear any objection from the neighborhood groups, I don't hear any objection from individual people, so I'm assuming someone knows more than me, so I went along with it, which I shouldn't have, because I'm, I have second thoughts now, and I don't really understand or accept what I see. I see everything filled in in the Lord Overpass, and it looks like four lanes of roadway on one side, and four lanes on the other in a certain section, but then it goes, narrows right down again. So I don't know what you, I don't know the purpose of it. Maybe you can, maybe people understand it, I just don't. And I have people here behind me that live in the immediate area, and they don't understand it either, so maybe I'm not alone, we're kind of the exception, I guess.
Okay, so I'm Natasha Vance, I'm the City of Lowell Transportation Engineer. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council about this project. I hear all of your questions, and I'm going to address all of them in a presentation. I think what might be helpful, we have a virtual flyover that was created by our consultant, and I think maybe we should just, it's about 33 seconds, we can watch it, and that will give everybody an idea of what a beautiful boulevard, the, the section of the Thorndex Street will end up looking like when we're done. So this starts at Jackson and Fletcher Street. The red lanes are dedicated bus lanes, which improves transit, and you can see there's multi-use pass on both sides, which accommodate both pedestrian and bike traffic, multiple turn lanes. This is Chelmsford, oh, that was Middlesex, and that's Chelmsford and Appleton. There's Summer Street, and then we're coming up to the Gallagher Terminal. All right, and if you'll pull up the PowerPoint, we'll go through that. So in this presentation, I'm just going to briefly address the design process we went through to get to this concept. There's a number of drivers behind the project, there was a robust public participation process that will hopefully explain how we got to that, and then I'll review the traffic management plan and, and some of our plans for communication during the project construction. Okay, so originally, this project was intended to replace the bridges of the overpass, which were structurally deficient. But as the project began, started being worked on, the Hamilton Canal Innovation District was, development was ramping up with the Justice Center, and we determined that we needed to extend Jackson Street to allow access into the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. In addition, in 2015, the City of Lowell adopted a complete streets policy. With a complete streets policy, that opens up a number of avenues of transportation funding for our community, which is great. It also means that we're committing to transportation equity, so that means pedestrian access, bicycle access, transit, and vehicular traffic. So any project that's designed in Lowell going forward will be accommodating all modes of transportation. In the past, transportation projects were typically designed to get a vehicle from point A to point B as efficiently as possible. But now we take more of a holistic approach, because the future of transportation is really less cars on the road and more pedestrians, more bicyclists, and more people using mass transit, because really, that is the best way to reduce congestion. Currently, the Lord Overpass really only has a good level of service for vehicles. It does not have bicycle or pedestrian access underneath the underpass, and there's a very limited pedestrian access on top. This project will greatly improve the level of service for pedestrians and bicyclists and transit while also not worsening the situation for vehicles. So one of the big drivers behind this project is safety. The Lord Overpass is actually unsafe for vehicles, pedestrians, and bicyclists. There have been 265 crashes in the, in the four-year range on the MassDOT crash portal. That's more than one crash a week. This is largely due to it being kind of a confusing and complex driving maneuver. There's a number of places where you have to merge, and with the amount of traffic, it can cause an accident. There are also a lot of traffic signals. For instance, to go from Chelmsford to downtown, in this very small area, you'll go through three different traffic lights. There is no bicycle infrastructure and very little pedestrian There is no bicycle infrastructure and very little pedestrian infrastructure, other than the couple of sidewalks on the top. There are some missing sidewalks. There also is no way for pedestrians to get from Fletcher Street across Thorndike. There isn't a crossing there. And that's actually where we would go into the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. That's where the Jackson Street extension would be, which is, I don't know if, I can't, I can't see it from here, but, and, and that would provide a safe walking route to the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. So, the project goals were, as you can see, there were many, many goals, including access to the Hamilton Canal Innovation District, mitigating the traffic that's gonna be generated by that development, adhering to our complete streets policy to provide transportation equity, really improving, making a beautiful gateway into the city, and improving the aesthetics of the Lord Overpass, and really improving the safety of that, that section of Thorndike Street. And then also getting a, making a multimodal connection to the Gallagher Terminal. So, the public participation process, it was a very robust public participation process. We engaged the public by sending out surveys. We had multiple meetings with the public, collected feedback, and made adjustments to the design based on that feedback. And we also met with the multiple stakeholders in the city, including LRTA and UMass Lowell. The original design intent was to keep the overpass and only improve the intersection at Jackson Street and Fletcher Street and Thorndike, just extend Jackson. The problem with that is, when you have the overpass ramp coming down, it was very difficult to have a safe and efficient way to turn right off of Thorndike Street onto Jackson Street and to access the Justice Center. And, you know, the, basically, the level of service for that interchange would, would have been untenable. So, and the public was also pretty clear with us that they wanted additional bike infrastructure. They wanted better pedestrian infrastructure, and that they found the overpass confusing and complex. And we've actually continued to incorporate public comments through May of this year with the Lowell Bike Coalition. So after this two-year public participation process, presentations to the Transportation Subcommittee, this is the final concept. And I realize this looks very different from what's out there right now, so let me just kinda highlight some of the key features. The red lanes in the middle are dedicated bus lanes. Those are also available for emergency traffic only. Then they will also have signals that allow the buses to go through there. Along each side, there are multi-use paths. They're 11 feet wide, which allows both pedestrian and bicycle traffic, and it's very safe. There's a five-foot buffer between the roadway and the multi-use paths. Let's see. And then, in addition, another really unsafe interchange was at Fletcher Street, where you would be turning left onto Thorndike. That interchange has been reconfigured, and there are two left turn lanes coming off Thorndike onto Fletcher to allow more space for queuing. Something you can't really see from the plan view is that this is a really complex traffic signalization plan, and our traffic signals will be state-of-the-art. There'll be a state-of-the-art traffic controller for the multiple phases for the pedestrian and bus signals, as well as all the traffic timing to allow the traffic to flow more smoothly. And they will all have camera detection. All of the city departments support this fill design for a number of reasons. The fire and police departments like it because they will have access to the bus lanes to enable them to get quickly through this corridor. DPW appreciates the fill because it eliminates two bridges that they no longer will have to inspect or maintain. And then, DPD likes this design because it provides safe access to the Hamilton Canal District. The transportation engineer likes this design because it allows for network connectivity for all of the traffic signals, which will ultimately be connected via conduit to the garage that will be built in the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. And then, the LRTA appreciates it because it'll improve their route efficiency. There's a really high number of buses that come through this corridor. I feel like it's somewhere in the 40 to 60 an hour range, so it'll improve their route efficiency. And then, lastly, Mastott and Secretary Pollock are really pleased with this design. So this is the design that was presented to the city council in January of 2017, and was approved unanimously. And then, we've subsequently moved it from the initial concept to 25% design, and came back to the council to show that one more time. And now, we're at 100% design. So we expect to have final plans and specs next week. Okay. All right, so I think one of the things that people are really concerned with is the impact of traffic that the construction of this project will have. And I just wanna be clear, it will take a little bit longer to get through this section of Thorndike Street while the project is being constructed. It is, however, through, traffic will be maintained through the entire process, and there'll be five stages to the construction, which I'm gonna go through. Emergency vehicles will have signal preemption in every phase of construction, and they will also be able to turn left onto Fletcher Street in every phase, even when regular vehicles can't turn left. So, they will have access. All right, so this is stage one of the construction. I don't think this thing, I can't, can't really see them. All right, so, basically, what will happen is, traffic will continue as it currently is on the ramps and on the overpass. On the northbound lane will end up being two lanes, one lane of traffic in each direction, while the contractor begins filling in the southbound lane. They'll obviously set up their, mobilize and set up their TMP. This phase is predicted to last about six Thank you. So for phase two, which should last about eight months, all of the traffic will be on the overpass portion, while the fill of the underpass occurs. Let me make sure I'm not. So, the placement of the fill will be completed, and then they'll begin constructing the southbound lanes. In this phase, underground utilities will begin being installed, as well as some temporary signals, and some temporary roadway, so that we can shift traffic for the, the bulk of construction, which will happen in phase three. Oh, sorry. You go up one? Thank you. All right, so, at this point, all of the traffic will be on the southbound side, and construction will proceed on the northbound side. The existing overpass bridges will be demolished, and then the fill will be compacted underneath the bridges. We will also be doing bridge work on Fletcher Street, and the, we'll finish the underground utility installation. Some curbing will go in, and the multi-use paths, and then the final traffic signals for the intersections will be installed. This is the most significant phase of the project, and will last about 14 months. And so, at this point, we're almost to what will ultimate, the ultimate configuration will be. The traffic will be divided for northbound and southbound lanes. We'll finish constructing the medians, the sidewalks, and all of the bike lanes, and prepare all the, the pedestrian refuge islands. This phase should last about eight months. And then, lastly, this is basically the final configuration. What will be constructed here is the busways, all of the final landscaping, and all the final pavement marking. And that phase should last about six months. And one of the big challenges we foresee with this project will be how to proactively communicate with the public about the project, particularly when the traffic management phasing will change. So we're, we're fine-tuning a multi-pronged approach for that, but these are some of the options we're, we're planning to use. Right now, people can go to our city website and sign up for traffic alerts. They can, they'll get them via phone call, a text, or email. We're setting up a group on the City of Lowell Facebook page, which will be a public group, that will allow us to post traffic alerts there and on Twitter. We'll definitely post when the staging is changing. Also, if something significant is happening, like there's going to be a crane in the middle of the construction zone, just so that people don't, aren't surprised and get distracted while driving through there. And then, we'll provide updates to the Lowell Sun and local radio and TV shows. And then, lastly, I can come to the council whenever you want me to, to update you on what's going on with the project, but probably at least on a bimonthly basis. I have another flyover, if you'd like to see it. If not, I can just take some questions, and hopefully, Councilor Mercier, did that answer some of your questions?
It answered it, but it didn't solve it.
Okay.
But anyways, from start to finish, how, how many years?
It's about three to three and a half years.
And?
Starting in spring of 2019.
So, how many lanes do we have on each side of this widened, widened area? How many lanes? It looks like four on one side, four on the other?
So there are two through lanes on both sides, and then, depending on the intersection you're at, there are turn lanes.
But all together, there's how many lanes on each side of that red bus route?
Uh, in the middle section?
Middle, how many on each side?
I guess, four on each side.
Four on each side, and it goes into how many lanes?
Well, so, there's two through lanes, and it goes into two through lanes in both ends. It just, these are all turn lanes.
And it's not, the purpose is not to alleviate traffic congestion. Isn't that what you wrote, someone wrote?
Yes. So, it's, I said, I guess I should rephrase that. The main driver of the project was not traffic congestion. The main driver of the project was the Hamilton Canal Innovation District and structurally deficient bridges. And so, in, and in the process of trying to solve those two problems, this is the, it took four, it was a, you know, it was an evolution of the design. Initially, it was gonna be an overpass and a revised intersection.
So let's say I'm at, getting off the Lowell Connector, and I'm taking a left down to Thorndike Street, like I'm heading to, I wanna go to the Hamilton Canal.
Mm-hmm.
Where am I, how am I, where am I going?
You're gonna come straight through until you get to Jackson Street, and then you're gonna take a right.
So you can't do that now?
No, so right now, what would?
You can't do that now.
No, well, Jackson Street ends, but the, what, if we had kept an overpass configuration, there would have been a on-ramp in between where you would turn right.
Well, right now, I can get off the Connector, go down, go up the ramp, and go down Middlesex Street and take a left to Jackson Street. How, how does that not suffice the situation?
Okay, well, because there's gonna be an increase, a substantial increase in traffic based on the development and the Justice Center at the?
And when I hear that underneath the, the overpass, there's no pedestrians or bicycle route there. No, but you can go up the ramp and go down there?
There is not a sidewalk on the ramp, and it's not a safe place for pedestrians.
It's like a highway. People don't walk on the highways.
And that's, that's a great point. This is like a highway interchange in the middle of our city, where it's, where it perhaps should be more?
Putting pedestrians and people right on it.
Well, we're putting them on multi-use paths on the outside of the interchange, buffered from traffic by trees and a five-foot wide grass swath.
Can't do that now, is the way it is. We couldn't do that now.
We tried to keep the overpass configuration, and after multiple iterations, in terms of level of service at the lights, in terms of meeting our complete streets obligations for pedestrian and bicycle and transit options, this is the best source. And I would just point out, this was a multi-year process where, with ample opportunity for people to provide input into what they wanted to see in this particular location. And, yeah.
I'm not blaming you.
Okay, I understand.
I know you're relatively new, so, I just find it, I just, I don't know, I'm not there yet.
Okay, is there, is there something else I could talk to that might help?
No, I don't know. Maybe we'll hear from somebody else. It's probably just me. I don't know. I just don't get it. I, we're spending a lot to do. For three years, we're tying up traffic, which I think we could do it a little bit different and still have it sufficient. But, I'm not a traffic engineer, but anyway, thank you.
You all say, Councilor Mercier?
Yes, thank you.
Councilor Melonazo, then Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Let me begin by thanking Councilor Mercier for bringing this forward, because I do think that it has been a long process. It's been three, three and a half years. All of us attended the various public sessions, and as was mentioned by the transportation engineer, the city council has looked at this plan over the years, voted unanimously on it a few times. And I think that, even though it states in the memo that it wasn't primary focus, traffic congestion, it is because of the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. We're talking about millions of square feet of space, a lot of people in and out of there every day, and the fact that all of the stakeholders have approved, well, we're not, we're 100% design at this particular point. All of the stakeholders have approved this plan, and I think it's an exciting plan. And the reason I, I say, you know, thank you to Councilor Mercier, because there is some confusion about what we're talking about doing here. And this, I think, clearly, in my opinion, alleviated a lot of that confusion for me, and I hope for the viewing, the viewing audience. I think the fact that we have this multimillion-dollar change in our downtown really requires this type of public infrastructure improvement. And I think that the fact that you're gonna be able to go off of Thorndike Street onto Jackson Street to get into that area, where we're gonna have another garage soon, is, is, is key. So, I'm excited about the project. I know that Secretary Pollock is excited about the project. We've been able to work with our delegation, both state and federal, to get the dollars needed to pay for this. And yes, is it gonna cause some inconvenience? You know, the saying, you have to break a few wakes to make a delicious omelet. Well, this is what's gonna, what is gonna happen here. But again, it has gone through a very good vetting process, and I think that this presentation tonight, I hope, answers a lot of questions that we've all been getting from, from, from people in the city, and in the suburbs, for that matter, because it really is talking about making an enormous change to the transportation, pedestrian, and bicycle traffic. So, thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just had a follow-up question. One of the public hearings I attended at the library, I, my understanding was that the, because of the construction, or the design of the various intersections, they were gonna be timed, and that traffic flow was going to improve from all the way to the Song of Serena, right to the Thorndike outlet, so.
Yes, and I, maybe I didn't say that very clearly, but, yeah, all of the, it's a very complex traffic signalization design, one of the most complex I've ever seen, which is why we're gonna have a state-of-the-art traffic controller cabinet. But yes, there, it will be synchronized, and it will tie into the Thorndike Widening Project all the way up through, and, and it should really help traffic flow through there. But in terms of it, traffic congestion being the primary driver for the project, that's, was not the intended focus.
No, I, I do recall hearing that as well. My understanding also, there were gonna be two, there was gonna be two lanes constructed for traffic to enter the Lord, the Lord Overpass, 'cause that is where a significant bottleneck, bottleneck is taking place. Does this plan lay that to, to, I know there's a drop-off to go to Hale Street, but then there are two lanes to drop into?
Yeah, there, yeah, there, oh, to the Lowell Connector. All right, so that's at the other, below Thorndike Widening.
Correct.
All right, so that's not part of this particular project, but ultimately, yes. So, it's the entire corridor, and ultimately, there will be two lanes accessing the Lowell Connector below the Thorndy, current Thorndike Widening Project, yes.
There will.
That's next phase.
I mean, won't that make a significant improvement to the number of vehicles that are allowed to enter? Because, to me?
Absolutely.
I go there frequently, or we all do, and that's, that's a major bottleneck.
Well, and, and everybody queues in the right lane, instead of being able to queue in both lanes to turn. So yes, that will be a significant improvement.
All right, thank you.
You all say, Councilor Elliott? Councilor Cirillo?
Hi, yes, thank you. I just wanna say that I'm also very excited about this project. And I think that since Lowell was the first city in the state of Massachusetts to implement a complete streets policy, to have the multimodal streets, it's fantastic. I think that this is a wonderful program. I'm, I'm project, and I'm really excited about the multimodal use. Thank you.
Councilor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, just going back to that January 2017 vote, I think at the time of that vote, my recollection was that the, the plan was 75% complete. And so, the vote really was more just to endorse the plan and go forward, rather than, 'cause we didn't have 100% plan at that time. But I, I think that this is, I like the whole plan, except for one thing. And I think this is what a lot of people have trouble with, is the, that's the main way of getting from the Highlands into the downtown. And there's, how is that gonna work? I think that people look at the volume of traffic that goes through that, that circle now, and just wonder how, instead of it being at two levels, if it's at one level, how's it all gonna work? And I, and I know you're at 100%, but the way it is now, the through traffic runs along Thorndike Street. But what about through traffic going from the Highlands into the downtown? Like in Boston, on Commonwealth Ave, when you approach Mass Ave, you have an option of going down underneath Mass Ave and just up into? and just up and going through, or you can go through the light. You can do either one. But that would allow the traffic from the Highlands to go directly downtown without having to deal with the light. So, it would provide for some through traffic. Now, I'm not a traffic engineer. I'm assuming that somebody looked at that, but you're new, and so you maybe don't know if anybody looked at that. But is that something that you could find out?
Sure. Okay, so, a couple things. One, the January vote was at conceptual plans. There was another vote in November, and that was the 25% plans, and I think that's what you were thinking of. And then subsequently now, almost, I guess, almost a year later, or nine months later, we're at 100% plan. Yes, so I have actually looked at... I have all of the data that was provided previously for the signalization designs and all the roadway decisions. I've met multiple times with VHB, our consultant, and have walked through all of the processes to how we got from an overpass to a fill design. And I think maybe it would help if you just sort of imagine, like, we're essentially just flattening the overpass, because those two through lanes that currently go underneath still run through the entire length of the project, and then we just have additional turn lanes. The other thing that you need to maybe think about is that the bus lanes are really going to help, because everywhere that anybody's put in dedicated bus lanes in Somerville and various other communities, the vehicular cars report just loving it, because they have a much clearer view down the road. There aren't buses in their way. And it really kind of moves a lot of the vehicles out of the way of cars. So, I'm happy to provide any information that you would like specific to the design process.
Okay. You know, I get all of that. And I remember that when we had the discussion, one of the questions that I asked Mr. Bosnato at the time was, couldn't we... Because one of the problems was that large trucks couldn't get underneath.
Yeah, there was a clearance issue.
Right. And so, one of the questions I asked is, why don't we just depress the road, right? So that there would be increased clearance. Which he explained to me at the time that we could not do that. I don't remember what his explanation was, but...
I think it was probably related to utilities, but...
Maybe it was, but it was a good explanation, whatever it was. So, it isn't... But I guess the only thing that I don't have confidence in, and I think a lot of people in the city don't have confidence in, is is there going to be gridlock? What assurance is there that when this is all done... Because we're not changing it after it's done. It's going to be there for a long time. That we're not going to have traffic backed up on Chumswood Street and traffic backed up on Middlesex Street, or on Appleton Street going the other way. That's the... Because it has to cross that. And at certain times of the day, I would think that that's... You know, I can see that just being a problem. And so, as part of the study, there would have been traffic counts, and you would have projected what the traffic counts would be in the future. And so, what assurances can you give the city council that that's all going to work out when it's... When this is complete, three and a half years from now?
Well, I can tell you, the project was designed by professional engineers who are skilled in their work, and it has been reviewed by a number of people at the city, and we are confident that the level of service will remain similar to what it is now. The other thing to think about is that currently pedestrians and bicyclists do not have a good level... Here, they basically have a level of service of zero, or Z. Like, it's not good.
I get all of that stuff, and you know, I like the buses. I like the bikes. I like the pedestrian. All of that stuff is all good to me. I recognize that we need to improve the access into the Hamilton Canal Innovation District. I just also am concerned that that is the major link between the Highlands and the downtown. And so, is that going to work? And I guess we just have to have faith that...
Yes, well, so I can tell you, those analyses have been performed.
Yeah.
And yes, so... But I'm happy to... I don't know if there's some data that I could provide to you later that would be helpful?
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Sure.
Any further, Councilor Leahy?
Just had one quick question, and I pushed this before Madam Mayor, Manager, and to the traffic engineer. Is there, again, any way we can try to open up Western Ave when we're doing this whole project? Can we take a look at that again to see if there's any federal monies to get that road open? I mean, it doesn't seem that difficult to go over the tracks to open up Western Ave to the downtown. The problem, obviously, is the railroads. But over the last few years, we've talked about going under it, going over it. But again, we should just keep pressuring somebody to try to open that up. So, if we can just still keep working on that, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Manager?
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. And I think this is a project that is confusing to many people to visualize what it's going to look like. As has been noted tonight, when we were able to get the money from the state several years ago, it was, as Natasha had indicated, to replace the bridges and to align into the Hamilton Canal District and align the intersection with Fletcher Street to have better access on both sides. This is very different through the whole process that's been laid out here. So, we'll continue to obviously update the council as the project goes forward. I think, separate and apart, the Western Avenue issue, we will look at and bring back information on that. I think there are challenges with the railroad, but we will look at that, because that is a real opportunity for that neighborhood to have access and direct connect, not just with the Hamilton Canal, but with the downtown as well. And then lastly, the flyover, as it's referred to. The video, I think, is helpful to visualize. I'm not sure if it's on the website of planning and development, but we can make sure it's on the website if people want to see it. And maybe we close out with that 33-second one more time, just so people can see it, if that's okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Conway?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very briefly, I... Obviously, you can see that this council has concerns about the traffic. And I think that... And by the way, thank you for the presentation. Appreciate that. But I will say that we have been promised over the years that when there be changes made in the traffic patterns, it would actually improve. And I think if you talk to anybody right now, you'll see that traffic is probably worse in the city than it's been probably ever been. Every time you turn around, it's extremely difficult to get from point A to point B and to navigate through downtown and into the different parts of the city. So, I think that there is... There's obviously a solid ground here of skepticism on whether this is actually going to work or not. And I think that's where... And I think Councilor Kennedy said, once it's in place, it's in place. We don't have any... We don't have any choice after that. You know, and again, what kind of guarantee do we have that this is going to absolutely work? And again, we have heard in the past that projects were going to make things better for the city and move traffic in a fast fashion. And anybody here that's traveled around the city of Lowell realizes that it's just so difficult, and people are so frustrated. I would say that most of the calls that I have received circle around parking and also traffic. So, again, I hope this works out. And there is certainly that, as one of the councilors said, that element of faith. And I hope that this particular time, it will work. Thank you.
Are we all, Councilor Kennedy?
Yeah, just... It's not like we're the only city with traffic. I mean, the traffic is bad in this city, but the traffic's bad everywhere, no matter where you go, and no matter what city you're in or where you are on the interstate or whatever. The traffic is just a lot worse now everywhere than it was 10 years ago or 15 years ago. So, I recognize that something needs to be done in order to improve the access to the Hamilton Canal District. It's just that I've had a lot of people approach me about that connection between downtown and the Highlands. But, you know, I support this project, and I also think that we just have to rely on people that are a lot more educated in terms of traffic and traffic control than I am or than anybody on the city council is, for that matter. Thank you.
Are we all set? Any further questions? Okay. Next, I need a motion to take 8.2 out of order for a public hearing. Councilor Noon? Councilor Noon, seconded by Councilor Cirillo. All right. 8.2, National Grid Verizon, New England. Request permission to install a new pole located at 23 Holden Street. I'd like to open up the hearing for those in favor. Those in favor? Yes.
Good evening. David Boucher, Senior Designer for National Grid, 1101 Turnpike Street in North Andover. Currently, on Holden Street, between our existing Pole 1 and Pole 2 is a fairly large span. It's about 220 feet. Usually, we're only 100 to 150. And the wire going between the two poles is hanging fairly low. It's telephone line. What we'd like to do is get... Place the pole as shown on the diagram we've provided, and that would enable us to move the wire and raise it up higher between the two poles, and also run our electric line, providing electricity between the two poles and also providing better reliability. And if the city sees fit and says it's okay tonight, would enable us to place the pole as shown by our petition.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else speaking in favor? Anyone else in favor? Clerk, make a statement?
I just want to make an indication. I had a call from an individual who's going to be part of the service of this pole going up. She had called me earlier. She wasn't able to attend because of a situation in her family, but she's going to be obviously supportive of the petition.
You all set? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in favor? That portion is closed. Anyone in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? That portion is closed. I need a motion to close the hearing for a motion to refer to the wire inspector for a report.
So moved.
By Councilor Mercy, seconded by Councilor Cirillo. Thank you. All right, we'll go back to the communication with the city manager. Next is catch base and clean outs. Councilor Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to Madam Managers and Mark Young. As soon as the motion filed, Mark Young took care of it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anything else? Okay. Next is the paving of Pemberton Street. Councilor Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the report. I know that it's going to be addressed in due time, so I appreciate it.
Okay, next, we have the ongoing recycling effort... I'm sorry, solar trees in the city. Councilor Elliott?
Thank you for the report, Madam Mayor. This was just an idea that came from a constituent trying to expand our solar trees. I do see that it's more expensive, and the incentives, unfortunately, are not available yet. But, you know, should funding come up, I think it's worthy of trying to explore, you know, renewable energy or alternative energy. And so, thank you for the report. It's not great news, because many other solar projects have some financial incentives, and unfortunately, this doesn't. But, you know, excuse me, I'm going to keep my eyes open, and I'm sure the administration will just see if funding does come up, that, you know, we can try to put these throughout the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilor Elliott, I know Catherine Moses is here, and she will continue to monitor that and whatever incentives come up. And it gave us an opportunity to see what a solar tree is, so thank you.
I do know they're popular in Florida and other sections, and they actually look like palm trees. And it probably is not going to be suitable up here, but I do think it... You know, they are popular in other sections, knowing that there's perhaps a little bit more sunlight, so thank you.
All right. Next, we have the informational reports. ENF, the FY 18 year-end report, the OPEB policy, or retirement policy, has been sent to a subcommittee, but is there any discussion at this point? Councilor... I'm sorry, Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you to the council. I appreciate this being sent to the subcommittee for a more thorough and discussion. I did just want to briefly touch on two aspects, and we do look forward to going over in further detail with the council. One is the communication that, based on our FY 2018 year-end closeout, in light of that, you know, my administration has implemented three different policies, one having to do with re-establishing or re-authorizing the vacancy review committee. And that means, until further notice, that any request to post a position must come through the review committee. This is not an all-out hiring freeze, but it's the next step from that. The next one is all expenses, and this has gone out to purchase of any goods or services over $1,000, must have prior approval through the administration. And then the third one, which deals with overtime and practices throughout the city, and again, in an effort to monitor expenses and overtime throughout the city in all departments. This must be reviewed by the finance team, and we're requesting weekly reports to do that. These steps have been necessary, as you'll see in the report from the CFO, Connor Baldwin. We have a number of concerns as we move into this fiscal year. They're highlighted, one of them being the fund balance for the general fund is significantly down, which gives us concern as to where we'll end up, particularly with regard to free cash later on in this calendar year. And that has a significant impact. So, these controls are being put in place much earlier in a fiscal year than we've seen or done in the past. But at this point, after significant work with the finance team, we believe it is absolutely necessary. But we look forward to going through the full report from Mr. Baldwin with you, highlighting where we see concern, what we need to address, and how we arrived at these conclusions. And then the second informational report is the OPEB policy. We're making a specific recommendation in that to come up with a policy to put money into the OPEB on an annual basis, based on a percentage of free cash, whatever that is, and 5%. And this is to not only address the significant outstanding OPEB unfunded liabilities, but also to impact... Or to have concern about any impact that may have on our ability to go out and bond capital projects in what our ratings would be. And so, we'll go into full detail as to how we view that and how, if we do not address this, how it could have a negative impact, costing us quite a bit of money here and now once we start bonding projects such as the Lowell High School. But yet, if we do implement some, it could be to the good, and we could save significant money as well. But we will... We look forward to talking to the subcommittee in detail about that.
Councilor Elliott?
Thank you. I just want to reiterate those three policy measures on vacancies, expenses, and overtime. I think it's wise, considering we're still early in the fiscal year. I just wanted to... And I know this is going to the finance subcommittee, but... So, the concern that you raised for the $4.3 million difference in revenues and expenditures as pertains to free cash, we used... Part of the budget was $2 million for stabilization. Do we feel comfortable that we're going to meet that goal, knowing that it should be forthcoming in the future, to, again, replenish the stabilization of the reserves that we... You know, that the plan was included in this year's budget?
I can let Mr. Baldwin answer that. We're hopeful that there is at least that amount to replenish that. But we're not entirely confident about that. So, but Mr. Baldwin can speak to that.
Thank you, Madam Manager. So to that point, we've been very proactive in addressing some of the year-end closeout measures with the departments such as grant deficits in some of the various departments that run on grants. So where the fund balance is the beginning point for the free cash calculation, with a note of lower number, we understand that those grant reimbursements are more important than ever, so I'm happy to report that we've made significant progress with the various departments that receive grants, that they have almost fully satisfied the reimbursements, which means that the number will not be reduced further. So we are hopeful. We never like to guess at what a free cash number will be until the city auditor, you know, submits the balance sheet to the Department of Revenue, but we are hopeful that we will at least be able to replenish reserves as we indicated during the budget process.
So just one last question, Mr. Mayor, and I know this is going to the subcommittee. So as you note in your report, on January 9th, the council appropriated 4.8 to, from certified free cash, including 250 to the school department's suspense account. Is that reflected in this year-to-date report that would require, that reflects a surplus? The 250 that was appropriated from?
Excuse me, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the 250 that was appropriated simply increases the single line item appropriation for that item, so that increases the budget on the expense side.
Okay. So you had mentioned there's still encumbrance, outstanding encumbrances. Haven't we closed out? Isn't the deadline September 1st to make sure that all our bills are paid?
The state gives us actually a smaller window than that to pay them, so if it's still essentially encumbered after July 15th, we move the, semantically, we move the purchase order into FY 19.
Okay.
It increases the budget and washes out when it's paid under 19.
Okay. All right. Thanks. I'll take this up. Thank you very much.
All set. Council Elliot.
Did we schedule this meeting yet?
Yeah, in the process.
Because I did want to schedule a joint subcommittee, what? Subcommittee for the school, for the school repairs and things. So I didn't know if, for a suggestion, I know next Tuesday, I know it's an off week, but we could do it next week if people are available.
I, you know, I'm not sure if the motion is to make, you know, to have a joint finance and facilities, it seems like it's-
So I mean, I want to schedule a joint sub-finance, a joint facility subcommittee later in the month.
Okay.
So if we had this report sooner than later, and I know next Tuesday is an off week, but it's open, so I know if people would be open to meeting next Tuesday on this.
I'll contact the numbers and-
Madam Manager.
I'm happy to do it. Next Tuesday is the meet and greet for the new Chief Richardson at the senior center at 6:00 PM, so I just, if people wanted to be there, just in case, I just wanted to let you know that that's already been scheduled.
All right. We'll talk.
Well, you know, Council Elliot, maybe we can schedule before, is there a school committee meeting? We'll sort it out.
You can pull, counsel. Thank you. All right. Next, we have the ongoing recycling efforts. Madam Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and we have been looking at ongoing issues pertaining to recycling, one that has come up here on the council floor, having to do with a discount for elderly in terms of the barrels situation and also a situation concerning potential fines for violation of recycling ordinance. As we've talked about a few times anyway, the city will be looking at significant increases into our contract due to contamination for recycling. That contract expires, our current contract expires the end of this calendar year, and we're in the midst of trying to negotiate a new contract, but we are looking at very, very significant increase. And so therefore, compliance is going to be critically important, and one of the ways of trying to bring compliance is to fine as is available under our current ordinance. But we've also discussed perhaps an alternative to just a fine for a first-time offense, and that would be if someone wanted to take an educational course, short one offered by the city in lieu of the fine on the first notice. So all of these issues would and should require some ordinance change, so rather than bring in an ordinance, we're looking for some direction from the council as to what way you want to go on these matters. And so perhaps this could be sent to the subcommittee to have a discussion having to do with the barrels and the discount and what that should be, as well as how we want to handle the fine situation for violation of the recycling and whether we want to offer an alternative for a first offense for class. So we would respectfully request perhaps that this be sent to the subcommittee, and then the city can take the information and prepare whatever ordinance that the council would like to direct us to do.
Have a motion for that? By not Council Elliot, seconded by Council Kennedy.
That is you.
To-
Is there a solid waste subcommittee?
No, environmental.
There's a recycling subcommittee.
Recycling.
Recycling. Okay.
Or environmental, either.
There's the environmental subcommittee.
There's the environmental.
Okay. Thank you.
Environmental.
Yep.
Okay. Council Elliot.
Thank you. Through you to the manager. While we're on the subject, can we, do we know why there seems to be like a day delay on picking up the yard waste? They've been behind for like the last month. Is there an issue with that or?
We can get your report. We've been notified on a weekly basis, but we will get a report. There's that, as well as some other issues as far as delays and that have come to our attention with regard to our contractors, so we'll get you a report on that.
And Madam Manager, could I add to that? The mayor's office has been receiving complaints about waste pickup not happening, in other words, their homes being missed.
Yeah, we've had that as well, so we will get a report because, as I said, these contracts are expiring, but we want to make sure that everybody's performing the way they're supposed to.
Council Milanozo.
If I could just add to Council Elliot's comment, they did pick up in my neighborhood, which is usually Tuesday, on Saturday, but a lot of my neighbors took their yard waste back in, so they put it back out for today, and when I came down here tonight, it's still out to now, you know, so it's an issue.
It is an issue.
Thank you. Council Kennedy, do you have a question? All set. Everybody all set? Okay. Thank you. I need a motion to accept and place and file these reports.
So moved.
Council Elliot, seconded by Council Cirillo. Next, the communications, city manager, out of state travel, Lowell Police Department, Department of Public Works, in the library, I need a motion to adopt. So moved. By Council Kennedy, I mean, I'm sorry, Elliot, and seconded by Council Cirillo. Roll call.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Milanozo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine years.
All right. Next, we have votes from the city manager. Vote, accept donation of $7,500 from Digital Federal Credit Union to the police department. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager, behalf of the city of Lowell, to accept a gift from the Digital Federal Credit Union, DCU, of $7,500 for use of city Lowell Police Department, supported next year's Lowell Student Police Academy, summer movie night, coffee with the cop, and national night out. I need a motion to accept.
Move to adopt.
Rooted by Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Mercier. Any discussion? Roll call.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Milanozo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine years.
All right. Vote, apply, accept, expend, $64,000 assistance to firefighter grant. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager, behalf of the city of Lowell, to accept a gift from Paul Belay of a piano to be used as part of the street piano program in downtown Lowell. Need a motion to adopt.
Move to adopt.
Second.
By Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Elliot.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes. Discussion.
I thought we'd be donating, having donated a saxophone, but a piano's okay too, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you.
He's a very good saxophone player.
We know. Thank you very much. Roll call.
Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercier.
Yes.
Council Milanozo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine years.
All right. Vote, apply, accept, expend, $917,000 assistance to firefighter grant. Waive the full reading, second reading by title. Authorize the city manager, behalf of our except and expend, in assistance to the firefighter's grant awarded by the Federal Emergency Management Agency and the Department of Homeland Security in the amount of $917,000 for the city of Lowell Fire Department. We have a registered speaker for us. Brian Boitres.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, city councilors, Madam Manager. I just wanted to take this opportunity, obviously, this is a great thing for the city, close to $1 million with the contribution of the city council is a tremendous thing for the fire department. It's going to allow us, and I thought I would be following the chief, so I hope I don't steal any of his thunder, but it's certainly going to allow us to modernize some of our equipment with new SCBA's and make sure that each firefighter has two sets of compliant firefighter gear for what is, you know, I don't have to tell you, is a very hazardous job. So many things go out to everybody involved, the grant writers, obviously, our congressional delegation down in Washington, which supported these grants, and, but especially to you. The reason I wanted to be up here tonight was to thank you, the council, because the commitment was made a few years ago by this council, the majority of this council, and you, Mr. Mayor, to bring our gear into compliance, to get each firefighter a second set of gear. And with this, this will bring in the compliance factor, and that is with a significant contribution by this city council in the last couple of years to get every firefighter into one set of compliant gear, a new set of gear, and it's extremely important. I don't have to tell any of you that cancer is the number one issue with the fire service today, and compliant gear and gear extractors, which is the new way of cleaning our gear and trying to keep our firefighters safe, has been funded by the city council. And I thought this was a good opportunity to say thank you to all of you. We look forward to continuing to work together. Obviously, the issues within the department are greatly satisfied with this grant as far as our protection, but unfortunately, you know, it doesn't end there. You've heard, well, the subcommittee heard tonight, we definitely have some needs in the department, number one being our trucks, you know, we're getting to the point where our engines and ladders are really getting older, and we need to do some work there. And our building maintenance. We're very fortunate, we put new roofs on the fire stations again, thanks to the council in the last several years, but we do have a significant issue at Engine 10 on Old Ferry Road with the roof out there, and so the expenses continue to mount as far as what we need, but it was a chance tonight to come out and say thank you for the support that we've gotten on every level of the government, including Senate, city manager Donahue, when she was in the Senate, was a great supporter of ours as well. Lastly, thank you, Council Mercier, for remembering today, 9/11, very important day that we'll never forget in the fire service, so I appreciate you mentioning that earlier this evening. On behalf of President Ryder, me being the senior member of our executive board, he gave me the opportunity to come up here and say thank you tonight, so thank you very much.
Thank you. On behalf of Lowell City Council, we want to thank you because all of us want to ensure that our firefighters are safe, and you're right, the next is to work on the equipment, the fire trucks and the stations. Counselor, I'm sorry, Chief Winwood, do you want to say anything before council speaks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd also like to thank the city manager, as well as the city council, the union, our congressional delegation for their support for this grant. This is a big win for the fire department. As Brian Boitres mentioned, the turnout gear is going to help keep our firefighters safer. We'll also get to replace all of our breathing apparatus. Our breathing apparatus is also very old. Some of the apparatus are up to 20 years old. It's, the technology is behind the times. We'll be able to get new, modern breathing apparatus that will also help keep our firefighters safe, keep them from getting cancer, and this grant is a big win for the fire department as well as the city. So once again, I'd like to thank everyone for their assistance.
Thank you, Chief. Council Elliot, you had your hand. You all set?
Well, no, I just think this is great news that we had, our fingers crossed, and I don't think we made it last year, but this is something, it's a significant need that we've heard through the budget process, and knowing our finances are tight, this is a step in the right direction. I just had a follow-up question. We've been pretty, very successful with grants. Are there grant opportunities, Chief, for, we just heard Mr. Boitres talk about the aging, the vehicles that are aging significantly, are there opportunities for the city to explore for trucks, funding for trucks?
Absolutely, Counselor. Last year, we were able to purchase two trucks, a new rescue and a new ladder truck, from an AFG grant and from a match from the city council. And the next round of funding for the AFG grant will be coming up in a couple of months, and we'll again, we'll apply for probably two engines on this round, and hopefully we'll be successful with that as well.
And just on the roof on Old Ferry Road, is that something the city, I know we have roofers, is that something that we do, we have to contract out, is it in the capital plan?
I believe it's in the capital plan. I've been in discussions with Commissioner Donison, I believe he's been out looking at the roof as well as lands and buildings, but-
Yes, if I may, Counselor, the lands and buildings department has been working on the roof. They've patched several leaks over the last month or so, and I know the weather's been very hot and they've been out there on some 95-degree days, so they're working hard out there to patch some of the roof, and hopefully we can get some funding to replace the entire roof in the future on the capital plan.
All right. Thank you all. Congratulations, Chief and city manager.
Thank you.
Thank you. I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
Council Noon, seconded by Council Leahy.
Can I just ask a quick question? Through you to the manager. Can we just get a report on Old Ferry Road roof? Because I know they did patch it and they stopped the leak, but I just can't understand the prices that we're getting for that, and I don't know why we can't do it in-house. It doesn't seem like a very complicated roof, so if we could just get a report on it.
Yeah, we'll get a report. It is also, we're just pulling up in terms of the capital plan, but we also are underway with our assessment in terms of the feasibility after the Collings report. The, our consultants are, they've wrapped up going through the schools, looking at prioritizing needed repairs and pricing so that we have an idea of the needs, and we're right now in the city buildings and I believe going through the fire stations as well with our consultant, but we expect that report in the very near future to kind of further inform the council following the Collings report, so we'll get that to you, as well as specifically Old Ferry Road.
All right. I mean, just some of these repairs shouldn't be as complicated as they come to us as they should, you know, should be kind of straightforward with the DPW department that we have, some of these reports, repairs should be able to be handled in-house, so that's something we have to look at in the future.
Yeah, I think they've been trying to do that, but whether it's adequate or not, we'll look at that. Right now, it is in a capital plan for 2020, that's next fiscal year, but we'll fill you in on that. Once we, I think once we have this next report, it's going to give us a lot more detail for the council to consider. should, you know, should be kind of straightforward with the DPW department that we have, some of these reports, repairs should be able to be handled in-house, so that's something we have to look at in the future.
Yeah, I think they've been trying to do that, but whether it's adequate or not, we'll look at that. Right now, it is in a capital plan for 2020, that's next fiscal year, but we'll fill you in on that. Once we, I think, once we have this next report, it's going to give us a lot more detail for the council to consider.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Next, we have ordinances, oh, I'm sorry, we need a motion to adopt.
We got that.
We got that. All right, roll call.
Okay, Council Cirillo.
Yes.
Council Conway.
Yes.
Council Elliot.
Yes.
Council Kennedy.
Yes.
Council Leahy.
Yes.
Council Mercia.
Yes.
Council Malanazo.
Yes.
Council Noon.
Yes.
Mayor Samaras.
Yes.
Nine years.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, now we have ordinances from the city manager. Ordinance to amend Chapter 266, Vehicles and Traffic, need a motion to refer to a public hearing on September 25, 2018 at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, seconded by Councilor Noon. Thank you. Next, a report in the Subcommittee, Public Safety, do you have a report, Council Noon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to invite my other Subcommittee members, if you want to add anything to what I'm about to report tonight, Councilor Malanazo and Councilor Leahy present at tonight's meeting. Council Mercia, Council Conway, Council Mayor Samaras, Council Cirillo, Council Elliot, Council Kennedy. Also present was Chief Police, Chief Richardson, Chief Fire, Chief Winwood, and the interim Superintendent of School, Chin N. Durkin. Also present as well is the firefighter union president, Chris Ryder. The update on crime prevention in the city going to Chief Richardson's is from June 2017 to August 2008. All crime in the city has declined by 29%, with the exception of the back central car break-in has increased 16%. The chief indicated that there's a hotspot, identified the hotspot, he has implemented different approaches to address car break-in, such as traffic enforcement and officer visibility and so on. With regard to the shot fire in the city, from June 2018 to August 2018, it has been an increase of 13%. The perpetrator and the victim, according to the chief, known to each other and often involved in drug-related and gang as well. So he's working on that with his staff in term of his, the patrol people to make sure and have different way of, you know, address this issue. As far as staff level, chief indicated that he would like to fill the night open position right now, officers, he's actually interviewing three transfer officers from a nearby community. He would like to fill the remaining of the opening, which is six. I think he's probably going to come to the manager to talk about that later. So the community policing, I was talking to the chief about, you know, was serious about it because how the chief got the job partly, I believe, because of how he's known to the community. They know him by his first name. I said, how do you, you know, I want to see the officers who walk the beat, known by the resident by first name, what, how do you implement that? He's talking about that, his style is a lead by example. He's talking about working to, with the new officers from the academies and talking to them, and also more important than that is that he said he's on the force for 27 years before he knew the chief and what the chief role and responsibility. He's going to change, he want to change that so that our young officers know what the chief does and maybe help in that process as well. On the agenda is also we're talking about the emergency planning, management planning, Chief Winwood talked about. The plan is that the chief is working with various other department, in the city department to come up with the comprehensive emergency management plan, this plan in hope to minimize the loss of light and, the loss of life, I'm sorry, and minimize the property damage and so on. So he worked closely also with the Mass Emergency Management Plan. He's talking about the upcoming event, Connecticut Festival is coming up, as well as the Bay State Marathon. In this marathon, roughly, he's indicated that you have four to 5,000 runner, so he worked with Beamer to help with the truck as a command post. So he's saying, when I talk about the emergency management plan, and I said, how do you communicate that to the resident? He said, way to communicate that for him would be through Beamer, through Looson, WCP, Neighborhood Group, and nonprofit organizations. So we talk about also is that what he need to do his job, he's, we heard him tonight about the compliant gear that the grant, that they got the grant, so he's, also indicated that, yes, he does, he does need a few truck that certainly would go a long way in helping his department to do their job effectively. So also on the agenda, last on the agenda, we're talking about canvassing and solicitation in the city. So I was, we were talking about how to address it because we heard that from Pawtucket, but not only Pawtucket will come out, address this issue or confront this issue, but also Centerville and other area in the city too. The clerk and as well as the chief indicated that, yes, people who go out and marketing, go to door and marketing their product, they do have a photo of their driver license, they have to apply with the city to get a permit and, of course, put up bond, but the concern we have is that, that those who come pick up the permit, the one that go out the door doesn't do somebody else permit, that's one. B, two, is that the issue of aggressive marketing, people very aggressive, you know, and really irritating the resident, so there's no answers to that at this time, so the chief will look into it. So that's report as I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. My fellow committee member, Councilor Malanazo, Council Leahy may have something else to add, please.
Thank you. We all set. All right, I need a motion to accept the report as a report of progress. By Council Mercia, seconded by Council Kennedy. Thank you. Next, we have under wire inspection Verizon, New England, request permission to install underground conduit in Hanhold for access on Pawtucket Street over the Northern Canal Bridge. Need a motion to accept and adopt a company report.
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Cirillo. Next, by the wire inspection Verizon, New England, request permission to install 184 feet of underground conduit at 165 Thondex Street. Motion to accept and adopt a company report.
So moved.
By Council Kennedy, seconded by Council Cirillo. Next, we have petitions, property damage, motion to refer to the law department for reported recommendation by Council Kennedy, I'm sorry, Council Noon and seconded by Council Malanazo. Thank you. Next, we have 8.3, CNA Engineering Group on behalf of TC Systems Incorporated, which is AT&amp;T, requests installation of telecommunication conduit in vicinity of 100 Chancet Street. Need a motion to refer to a public hearing on September 25, 2018 at 7:00 p.m.
So moved.
By Council Noon, seconded by Council Cirillo. Thank you. Next, we have motions from the Lowell City Council. Council Mercia requests city manager to have proper department explore feasibility of making Saddle Street Avenue a one-way, a one-way at the discretion of the neighborhood. Need a second motion by Council Noon. Council Mercia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If you notice, I said Saddle Street slash Avenue.
Yep.
The neighbors there are telling me that it's actually a street, but the sign says Avenue, so I took it upon myself to call the traffic upstairs to the traffic engineers, and I asked them if they could look that up and could they give me an answer, and it is actually Saddle Street, so they're going to change it according to what it should be. And in the same instance, it's a street that has four houses on one side, four houses on the other, but it's used as a cut-through, and there's a bend in the road, and it's very narrow, and people are speeding. I could get a, probably a machine there to detect the speeding, but once that's gone, they're still going to speed. They said that if an emergency vehicle has to go through, it's very difficult, so they'd like to have it one-way, but I'm not saying myself which way. Usually when we ask that request, someone from the planning department goes and asks the neighbors, which side of the street would you want one-way, and so I'll leave it to the discretion of the neighbors. That's it in a nutshell. Thank you.
Further discussion? Thank you. Next, we have, by Council Mercia, requests city manager to have proper department install 15-minute parking signs in front of the Olympia Restaurant at 453 Market Street.
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Cirillo.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To the proper department install two 15-minute parking signs, thank you, it speaks for itself.
Okay. Next, we have from Council Cirillo, request city manager to contact the MBTA regarding the timeline of when they will be cleaning the debris that was left by the homeless camp located near the railroad tracks behind 50 War Street.
Seconded.
Seconded by Council Mercia.
Hi, yes, thank you. I know that this has been an ongoing issue with this area and actually this home, and it's been ongoing for about 15 months. So what I was, what I'm hoping for is to get a schedule of clean, you know, a cleanup schedule from the MBTA to see where, where the areas of Lowell that they're going to be cleaning for, near their tracks, so that we can actually give the residents some information as to when certain areas are going to be cleaned, if they have something like that. I think that if we could look into it, that would be very, very appreciated by the residents who have to live in that area of tracks or in the many area of tracks that actually have the debris from the homeless people. Thank you.
Council Kennedy, then Council Mercia, then Council Elliot.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a really good motion, but I also think that it comes with a lot of challenges. I know that this matter has been ongoing, going back to the Murphy administration, and I know that they were at that time in touch with, with the railroad and with the MBTA, and they didn't get any cooperation from anybody to date. And also, too, I would point out that this is not the only location along the railroad line where there is a camp like that. There are others that are cropping up, and maybe that's because the MBTA doesn't want to get involved, but, you know, they need to get involved, and it's, that camp that we're talking about on War Street is significant, has like a lot, real lot of stuff at this point, and we don't need additional, additional camps either. So, Madam Manager, I wish you the best in your quest to take care of this one, because this has gone on for, I got to think, eight or nine months or more. Thank you.
Council Mercia.
See, this is one of the problems of the drug epidemic. Picture yourself living on this street, and you look out the window and you see the railroad tracks, you see an abutment, and you see a homeless camp right outside your window. Well, they have since moved, but they left every debris that they possibly brought with them there. It's not an easy-to-reach spot as well, but we, but I will tell you that the co-op group actually deals with the camp, camps, the homeless camps, and they knew of this particular area, so they called this man named Mitchell, who works for the MB, who works for the railroad company, not MBTA, but the railroad company, and he supervises from Maine to Connecticut. He's only one person. He has that whole area all along, for miles and miles and state to state, and he said that that particular area is owned by the MBTA, so they're really actually not doing anything about it. So I'm pleading for a team of somebody to come by. It's very difficult to get to that spot, but here's the deal. So you pay taxes, you have the misfortune of living near a group that are homeless, and then they move away, and then you go out in your backyard and you have a cookout and you're seeing rats. These are taxpayers. I don't know that I want to say you do it or you're doing it, it's your responsibility, it's somebody else's responsibility, but we're these neighbors, the taxpayers. My God, if we could just get somebody there, group of people, to pick this stuff up. It was so bad that the neighbors actually went down the embankment and they moved it all into a pile, because it was scattered all over the place, but they figured they'd centralize it. But it isn't up to them to do that, and so I'm pleading for some help here. It's very difficult. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliot.
No, those are the issues raised by my colleagues, and it's frustrating. Do we get any cooperation through, Mr. Mayor, to the city manager, do we get any cooperation with, is it Pan Am? Once it was time.
I think this is actually, the MBTA is my understanding, and so they haven't been cooperative, but we're going to try and assemble a group and strategy to try and bring some, some pressure to bear. We're reaching out to the state delegation as well to try and work that side of it with the MBTA, so we, it is, it is really disgraceful and unfortunate for the neighbors.
So this is, is this the only one that we're, that we, I mean, it's a good motion. Clearly, we're moving into the colder weather, and we'll see these sprouting up more often than not.
Well, unfortunately, it's not the only homeless camp, but as far as the MBTA portion, but we will, you know, working with the inspectional services, we will try and address it. There's very little on city land, but there are homeless camps on private land, and this is one of, or other owned land, and this is one of them with the MBTA.
Great, thank you.
All set? Okay, thank you. Next, by Council Cirillo, request city manager to have the proper department provide the city council with an update as to the issuance of the paperwork from FEMA that the city will provide to the residents who will no longer be in the flood zone so that they may send paperwork to their insurance company. Need a second?
Seconded.
By Council Elliot, Council Cirillo.
Hi, yes. This, we're almost at the end of this, and I'm, this, I would just like an update for the residents for that paperwork that the city is going to give to the residents so that they can provide it to their insurance company, saying that they are no longer in the flood zone, so I'm really looking forward to seeing the report as to when we're going to have that paperwork for our residents. Thank you.
Okay. Next, by Council Cirillo, require city council to become a partner, city with the City of Yorkville, Illinois, and 187 other cities in their proclamation to project and support of national suicide awareness, in which members of Lowell City Council will read the proclamation of prevention and awareness during one of the city council meetings in the month of September. Need a second?
Seconded.
Council Kennedy, Council Cirillo.
Hi, yes. I was contacted by Joel Frieders. He's a Yorkville, Illinois alderman, and he, he has this wonderful program that has gotten over 187 cities in 17 states to sign on to, and it's called the Proclamation Project. And it's where we're asked to read a proclamation at a public meeting during the National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, which is this month, to recognize the importance of talking about mental health. And I just, I just thought that this was a really nice project, and I think it would be wonderful if we became part of this as a sister city. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Oh, yes, sorry. And everyone has an example copy of the proclamation on their desks, and I just think it's a really wonderful thing, and I've given a copy to Christine also. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, by Council Kennedy, request city manager to invite the representative Lowell Spinners to an economic development subcommittee to discuss the possible infrastructure improvements and the prospect of the team affiliation with the Boston Red Sox until the year 2022.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Conway. Mr. Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just being pretty quick on this one, I think everybody recognizes that the Lowell Spinners are an important part to, of summertime fun here in Lowell, and that we're happy to host Air Red Sox affiliate, and I think as everybody is aware, the AAA team for the Red Sox is moving from Rhode Island to Worcester, and it's my understanding that the Commonwealth has committed to 30 or 35 million dollars in infrastructure improvements for the city of Worcester in order to accommodate the team. So it seems to me that maybe if we require infrastructure improvements, that maybe we ought to try to get in on that and have our improvements included, if we have any, but at the same... So it seems to me that maybe if we require infrastructure improvements, that maybe we ought to try to get in on that and, and have our improvements included if, if we have any. But at the same time, if there's going to be that, that type of investment by the Commonwealth, I think we would, we should try to see what kind of assurances we have that the, that the Spinners will remain in Lowell over the long term. So, so that's what the motion does. I just think this is a good time to look at those two issues, and, and so the motion asks that the matter be referred to the city manager, but also to the economic development subcommittee. I've had some conversations with Mr. Heller regarding these issues, and I'm sure he'd be happy to come before the subcommittee at some convenient time in the future. Thank you.
Any further discussion? If I made from the podium, I think this is a very good motion. It's a timely motion at this particular point, because with all the action that's going on in Worcester, I think we have to look at what is going to happen with the Spinners in Lowell, and I, I don't think we're just going to accept that they'll always be here, but they'll be here if we provide the right type of environment, and we do work this out. Thank you for that motion. Next, by Councilor Kennedy, request city manager review trash contract that discounts for seniors relative to the size of their trash barrel. Motion by, seconded by Councilor Sorillo. Councilor Kennedy?
Well, this matter is being referred to the city manager, who's in the process of negotiating the contracts, but, and I brought this up before, but I just felt like it should be his motion. I really think that the discount for seniors should be based on the fact that they're seniors, rather than on the amount of trash that they throw out. And so if some seniors require a smaller barrel, because it's easy to manoeuvre, easier to maneuver, then that's fine. But for others that, that want the bigger volume being our barrel, I think they should be able to, to have that as well. So, and I would ask that that be, you know, part of the contract negotiations, if that's appropriate, or at least taken up in a, in a very timely fashion.
Thank you. All right. Next, by Councilor Elliott, request finance subcommittee meet with the school committee to discuss the budget issues. Need a second? By Councilor Noon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion speaks for itself. I know there's been quite a bit of discussion on the school committee side. In fact, there was a motion that was filed and adopted to meet with the finance subcommittee. So I just wanted to follow up. We've had some earlier discussions on financial issues, I'm not trying to interfere, and in accordance with Chapter 70, I just think it's important to have a discussion, knowing that we did have members of the finance, the school committee come to the council early, early in the year to express concerns about the finance in the, in the schools, and I think it's, I think the timing is important, given the reports that we received earlier in the night.
Thank you. Any announcements? Councilor Mercia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On Thursday, this Thursday, September 13th, from six to 10 o'clock in the evening at Cavallaro's, we're going to be hosting an Easter sale event. Lisa Saab, Jenny Nunez, and myself were the chairs of Easter sales. Easter sales provide services to ensure that children and adults with disability have equal opportunities to live, learn, work, and play. So anybody interested, come on down. Tickets are available at the door. Entertainment, many things will be happening, and if anybody would like to donate, that would be fine. Thank you so much.
Councilor Elliott?
I don't have announcements, Mr. Mayor. We don't wait for a couple of weeks, so I thought it was important to request that we suspend the rules to get a report from the city manager or Eda Matzek, Matzek, regarding the letter from the Secretary of State's office, to get an explanation of what has taken place, what is taking place, to, to reassure voters and people in the city that, yes, there were some inconsistencies, there were some problems in the, in the system, but they are being addressed. And we did receive, I think it was a three-page letter this afternoon outlining what has taken place in some of the precincts, reconciling of ballots, absentee ballots, hand-counted ballots that were put in island bags. So I just think it's important to, to have the manager report on what has taken place, what is going to take place, knowing that we still have another election to go through.
I need a second for that report. Councilor Illinois, a second. Madam Manager?
Thank you, thank you, and through you to the council. As the council was aware, that as of yesterday, Monday, let me back up, we had an election a week ago today. The day after the election, and I, Eda Matzek, as well as the solicitor who've been working on this, were notified by the Secretary of State's office to lock down all ballots, everything pertaining to the election until further notice, which is what the city did. I will summarize quickly some of the concerns, and from that point forward, the city worked with the Secretary of State on a daily basis throughout the weekend, addressing the, as, as other communities did as well, addressing the issue in terms of the, the election. And this pertained in particular to the congressional election because of the closeness of the tallies of the unofficial results, and so each community worked diligently to arrive at official results. Yesterday afternoon, we did receive a letter from the Secretary of State that cited a couple of concerns. You know, one of them having to do with ballots in three precincts that were, these would have been handwritten ballots, and that were put in a envelope instead of in the bin. Those three precincts totaled 88 votes, but the votes were, were accounted for, they were not lost, they're there. And then the other one had to do with absentee ballots that noted, that were in the 19 absentee ballots. These are ballots that arrived at City Hall, too late to send out to the respective precincts, but that were counted as well. So those I'm going to ask the solicitor to address in further detail. I just want to assure everyone that there's no concern as far as we have knowledge of, of any lost votes, votes not counted. The integrity of the vote is there, and everybody who, who voted, their vote was counted, process was, was followed. In 30 of our 33 precincts, when it came to handwritten ballots, 30 of the precincts followed the proper procedure. Three did not, but again, it didn't affect the number of votes or the, the tabulation of votes. And in, in essence, it's this. When someone votes and they fill out their ballot, if they handwrite a name on the ballot, let's just say John Jones is written in on the ballot for any one of those, the ballot would get fed into the machine. All of the votes would be counted for the ones that were properly filled out, but because there was a handwriting, after the votes were counted by the machine, the ballot would be spit out and, and put aside because of the, the hand name that was handwritten. And then, and Eda knows this process well. Those should be, under the rules, tallied for those particular names, and then the tally sheet is to be put into a nylon envelope provided by the elections office, and sealed and locked, and returned with the other ballots in the machine at that precinct. That was done appropriately in 30 of the precincts, which is how the, our poll workers, wardens are instructed to do that. In three, what happened was the, in those particular three precincts, in addition to a tally sheet in one case, and, and others, just the, the ballots themselves were sealed in the envelope, put into the nylon envelope, sealed, locked, returned to City Hall. So that was something that the elections office discovered after the election took place, and everything was returned, reported that to the Secretary of State. But again, there's, the ballots were all counted. And then the other issue had to do with those absentee ballots that were received after, too late in the day of, the day of the election. The rule is, the law is, that if a absentee ballot is received, postmarked by the day of the election, it is to be counted. And, and what would happen is the elections office will send those absentee ballots received here at City Hall to the respective precincts where they belong, where they will be counted at those precincts. However, in, in many cases, almost every election, there are some that are received too late to get them to the precinct by eight o'clock, but they are postmarked. And in that case, in, in this election, there were 19 absentee ballots, and those were counted, but they didn't make it to the precinct. But those votes were counted as well. Those are the two areas of concern, and we've responded to the Secretary of State in writing today. The solicitor responded. I also wanted to just speak to, there were some reports that the secretary was taking over the election office. That is not accurate. The recount will proceed. It will be conducted by the city election office, by Eda Matzek, the law department, as would normally be the course. As the secretary told us in his letter, he was going to appoint a designee to assist in that process for here and for the city of Lawrence, and he has appointed an attorney from Methuen to aid and assist the elections office as necessary. So that's a process, that's a work in progress. But I'll turn this over to the solicitor and/or Eda Matzek to fill in anything that I may have missed.
That is a, an accurate summary of where we are now. Our focus is primarily right now on the, on the recount itself. As the manager indicated, the former clerk of the city of Methuen, who is a, retired now, I believe, it will be assisting us in the, in the election, and we'll be meeting with her tomorrow. We had a conversation with her today. We are preparing our planning, as other communities are doing, and we will keep the council updated as to the recount. The recount will be held actually on Saturday, and work will, it will commence actually on Friday with respect to the separation of the, of the ballots, and all results have to be in by Monday, the next, this coming Monday. As far as the communication that we received from the Secretary of State's office, as I noted in, in our response, we are fully committed to working with them as we continue to address these issues that they have raised, but we wanted to at least send off an initial response as to items contained in their letter, where there might have been some level of confusion. So for example, the manager has spoken to the absentee ballots, and it appeared from their letter that there might have been the belief that our absentee ballots were, that absentee ballots were counted after the close of election, after the close of the poll. That did not happen in this election. Same with all of our other elections. All absentee ballots are time stamped. We keep a record of them. They are intended to go to the polls, excuse me, during the course of the election, but depending on when the absentee ballots are received in the election office, sometimes, particularly given the geography of the city and crossing a river, there isn't time to do that. That was the case for a, a small number of absentee ballots. Those absentee ballots were time stamped on time, and they were included with the review by the election commissioners on Friday. On this past Friday, election commissioners reviewed the provisional ballots. It was a review that started at eight in the morning and concluded at eight at night, eight in the evening, and apart from doing the provisional ballots, election commissioners also reviewed and accepted the absentee ballots. The response from the city also speaks to some of the poll procedures that are done at the, at the end of the day. One of the instances that the manager referred to was that a number of ballots that were processed in the machine were spit out and were in fact included on the tally sheet, were put in the wrong bag. They were not put in, they were put into a bag and not into the, into the bin with the rest of the ballots where they should have been. The, Eda Matzek does training sessions before every election, in fact, multiple training sessions before every election, and also includes with each precinct a written checklist to help aid the poll workers. But, you know, sometimes mistakes will happen, and that unfortunately happened in, in three of the ballots, three of the precincts, but as the manager also emphasized, regardless of where those ballots were put, they were appropriately accounted for, and the, that's what we would consider to be obviously the most important thing. So we will continue to, to, to work cooperatively with the Secretary of State's office, and, and our focus is indeed on the recount.
Okay. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think it was important to provide this information to the people at home that are watching to ensure that the integrity of our elections are never at, at doubt or at question. So I appreciate moving forward, measures addressed in the letter are going to be addressed, and do we train again before the election, or is that typically just, is it before every election, or will you, will you sponsor another training session?
Ed is getting up to the microphone, too.
So yes, we have, in past years, held multiple training sessions before each election, and that's a practice that we will continue for November.
Can I just ask about the recount for this? Is it all done by hand? Or did you have a follow-up?
To the extent that you're asking about the recount, there also will be a training for the, for the recounts as well.
And they're all done by hand, by?
Yes, they're done in teams. The commissioners will be present, and Eda can go in greater detail, but there are a number of people, volunteers, who will participate, and they will be trained prior to that.
Yes.
And campaigns, it's open to the public, and campaigns can be present, and the public can watch it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the update. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Conway, then Councilor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. We had, what, two or three machines break down for a little while? Is that?
We did. And, and though that's separate from what we're talking about here, the, the machines, I, I, that's a very good point, because the machines were, were purchased in 1998, and I remember when they were purchased. They were brand-new, state-of-the-art at the time. They're no longer brand-new, state-of-the-art. And, and we did have them go down at various polling places, and that posed a challenge. We had technicians on, on board to go and fix the machines, but they're old. And the, and one machine was not able to be fixed, and that was at the Bailey School, and those votes had to be counted after because of the machine malfunction. So at some point in the future, we, we will need to discuss what we should do about purchasing new machines. I'm told that the, we are way past the life expectancy, but that's a discussion for a different, different day, I guess.
I, I think you just answered my question, because I was going to ask you if we had, first of all, if we have any extra machines, and I think also how old those machines are and what, what the life expectancy would be, and also, you know, should we start planning, and what the cost is for those, and, you know, whether we start replacing. And again, I want to thank you for the report from, from you and also the city solicitor, because I think you did clear up, obviously, a lot of things, because people were, people were concerned, and this is, this is one process that you need to get right. There's no doubt about it.
It has to be beyond reproach, and, and there has to be full faith in the election process. With regard to extra machines, we have two, two extra machines that can be put into service. We've talked about perhaps trying to rent another one or two, just in case for the November election. We also have a technician that was on hand, and that was quite busy, and again, the conditions, the weather conditions were quite warm. It was humid that day. Many of the polling places were, were hot, and I want to thank all of the workers who spent, you know, a long time in pretty tough conditions and hung out, hung through throughout the day, and, and by and large, did an excellent job for the city. Obviously, there were a couple of, of anomalies, but, but those were, will be addressed, and we are exploring whether we need an additional technician as well for the November election, which will likely be a big turnout. So that's all something we're considering, Councilor.
One, one last question. The individuals are trained for the, for Election Day, and do we have, do we have individuals that are, like, let's say substitutes? Because here you are, you're training X amount of people, you're training, let's see, what are we? see, what do we have, thirty-three precincts, is it?
I think we're training about two-hundred-and-fifty people. Is that right?
We are. So we're required to have six poll workers at each polling location. But we always overstaff each polling location to ensure that people can have a break. And in the event that somebody becomes unavailable.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Council Kennedy, then Council Elanazo.
Um, what were the three precincts where there was a problem? Which three?
I believe it was eight, eight, one, eight-one and eight-two.
Eight-one and eight-two.
And then ten, was ten-one?
And one of the tens.
One of the tens.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I understand that the, the machines are twenty years old. But I also realize we only use them twice a year. So, um, do we do anything in, as far as maintaining the machines, uh, before the election? And, and what do we do, uh, about that? How does, how does that work? Are they maintained on a regular basis? Or are they just, what do, what do we do?
It's my understanding, there's a serv, we have a service contract, and they are, um, they are, uh, worked on or, uh, maintained once a year, um, prior to election. Is that correct, Etta?
Yes. So we do have a service package. Um, we do have them maintained annually. We actually just had every machine tested and maintained, uh, two weeks prior to the election.
We did. But we still had a problem?
We did.
Okay. So, um, so do we have any recourse on that? I mean, what's the point of having the service contract if you have problems anyways?
Well, I think the, the, when, when they serviced them, they thought they were all ready to go. But again, depending on the, the use and the condition, it caused some of them to, to shut down. Almost from an overheating, uh, sort of aspect, if you think of a printer or something like that, that they overheated and they, they stopped. And so they had, we had to get a technician out there to get them going again. Except, with the exception of one at the Bailey that, you know, and, and through the maintenance, um, process, again, based on, I've learned a lot about these machines over the past few days, believe it or not. But, uh, parts are replaced. It's not ju, you know, there are many parts that have to be replaced because of the age, because of the failure. So that's all something that's part of the contract. But notwithstanding that, sometimes parts will fail, even though they didn't appear vulnerable or not functioning at the time of the maintenance.
If we were to replace the machines, what, would they be the same type of machines? Is there a new technology or a new, new type of model or something that's different from what we're using right now?
Um, there is new technology that does exist that has been approved by the Secretary of State's office. So we would look into whatever options that we have.
Well, is it something that you could do, um, on a, on a, uh, you know, stage it so that you bought so many machine, rather than have to buy, you know, uh, machines for every precinct all at once, would you be able to just sort of, you know, buy, do them for ten, and then do another ten?
It's something that we would have to make a whole acquisition of the machines. We could not kind of partially, um, replace them in waves.
Why?
Um, you're, we're unable to do that.
Why?
Uh, I believe it's because they're running separate operating systems. So we would not be able to run multiple operating systems at once.
You mean, when you, you count them all up in here? When you, when they're all brought here? That's, that's why?
That. And I believe there's regulations that would not allow us to have kind of different machines.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
The city solicitor wants to make a statement.
Just, uh, just one added point with respect to the machines. The, um, the manager had mentioned that we had had a technician. It's something that not only before every election do we have these machines, uh, looked at and updated and, uh, in a testing and have them serviced. But, um, we are probably one of the few communities that, uh, spends a bit of money every single election to have an onsite, um, uh, maintenance person available. So that in the event that there is a problem with one of our machines, unlike other communities, we don't have to wait. We have somebody, um, right here in the district to go and, to go and fix it. As far as, um, why would they break down two weeks after having them all looked at? Um, this election is no different from, uh, every other election. And, um, I can't think of an election in which the maintenance person, um, that we have, um, had in the past, um, who has since passed away, John Leveki, um, he would have always been busy on Election Day with various problems to the, uh, to the machines for a variety of reasons.
So, if I could, Mr. Mayor, so were you suggesting that the city was prudent in having the technician because the, the machines only broke down for a short period of time because we had a technician on hand, rather than that they would have been broken down for the rest of the day?
Absolutely. So prior to us doing this, we've done this now for several years. Uh, prior to the city doing this, if, if we had a problem with a machine, we would then, um, call in and then we would have to await the arrival of a service repairman and, um, a maintenance person. And during the course of an election, you're competing with, um, that, um, group servicing all of the other communities that are also having their election and also are experiencing various problems.
Thank you. Council Elanazo.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, through you to the solicitor. This is good information to get out to the public. My question is, is the Secretary of State's office satisfied with your response? Uh, is there any question that, is there any question that the absentee ballots and other provisional ballots would be deemed null and void by the Secretary of State's office? I mean, again, you did a very detailed response. But if we haven't heard back from them yet, how do we know they're accepting our position?
Uh, we don't. And I, I have, uh, I did have a discussion with, um, uh, the attorney for the election division today. Our focus really was on the, um, upcoming recount. And we did discuss other things that were not contained in the Secretary of State's, um, letter. And so, um, um, for example, Lowell had a high number of blank ballots. That wasn't reflected in the, um, in the letter. But verbally, it was communicated that that was a reason that a particular spotlight was on, on Lowell. Those blanks, uh, I should note, are done by the machine. It's not a, um, it's not a hand-count function. So the machine generates these, these blanks. Um, and we also had a, a much higher percentage than other communities in provisional ballots. But that, um, my view is that that's a good thing. Because it shows that people aren't being turned away when they go to vote. Um, their votes are being, they're being allowed to vote. Those votes are being taken. And then you go through the proper procedure at the, um, at the end of the day. So I think right now, the, the focus of everybody is recount, uh, as called for by the Secretary of, uh, by the Secretary of State himself, demanding a recount. And we will, um, uh, see that process through. And to whatever degree further discussions are needed on the city's response or what we did on Election Day, then, you know, we stand ready to, to do that.
Thank you. One, uh, one follow-up question. I think we all received an email from the Pawtucketville Citizens Council implying that there may have been an impropriety or a question asked of voters at a Pawtucketville precinct. And I just don't know where that ended up. I never saw a response from anybody.
I haven't seen it.
I, I, I don't believe I've seen anything on that either.
Council Kennedy?
Yeah. I, I think what it was, was that one of the campaigns had checkers, you know, checking who went in to vote. Um, and they were just able to do that. And that's, um-
But they were outside. They weren't inside. They were inside?
No, they were inside.
No, they, they're inside. Poll watchers can be inside.
Yeah. So it was okay. It's just that I think that, that doesn't happen all that often, um, here. And so that's why it was, I think, um, some people were puzzled by it. But that's, that's all it was.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah. And that's legal for a campaign to have a poll watcher inside.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Council Mercier?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will leave you with this thought. I have the utmost respect and confidence in the ability of Etta Matzek. She has been a stickler for rules. She's an attorney. She knows the laws. She knows how to handle it. She's been doing it for quite a while. And no thing against you. We know people do tend to make mistakes. I don't think you trained anybody wrong. I think you did a marvelous job. But I just wanted to say that. Keep up the good work. And sorry that this happened. Cause I might do something one way and someone might do it another. So good for you. Thank you.
Council Lee?
I, I just wanna say the same thing. I think that office does a great job. And the story was, uh, the way it was, um, you know, put in the paper and everything was just wrong. So, yeah, were there a few things that were, you know, some discrepancy? Well, I think they do a great job down there. It's really come a long way. So, um, it's a black eye that we don't deserve. So.
The city's listed in this, and you?
Uh, just, just a point of clarification. Uh, while I agree with you, with respect to Ms. Matzek, uh, she is not a member of the bar. She's not an attorney. She may sound like one, but-
Maybe after this, she will be.
I thought she was.
Madam Manager?
Yeah. I just wanted to acknowledge the great work by Etta in, in the incredible hours since the, not only leading up to the election. Because, uh, you know, people working in the elections office didn't get a Labor Day weekend. It was a different type of Labor Day weekend. And it didn't stop after the election. And it went right through from early morning till well after midnight every day since. And so, uh, I know it's a, a job, but I just wanna give credit where credit is due. Uh, and, and again, I just wanna reiterate, um, that Etta Matzek, her staff, the law department, will be conducting the recount with the assistance of a designee who will act as an advisor. So the office has not been seized or taken over.
Thank you. Council Elliot?
Can I just give one last quick, quick note of announcement? And that, I don't know if everybody saw this, but the nine-one-one calls, um, from now on, the wireless nine-one-one calls will be routed through the Lowell Police Department, not the regional dispatch, which is a very good thing. Uh, it, you don't have calls that will be dropped. Um, it won't have to get rerouted from state police to the city of Lowell. Uh, and so that's happening. The only exception would be if it, a call's coming from four ninety-five or Route three, that will still go through the state to the Lowell Police. But other than that, including the Lowell Connector, they will go right to the Lowell Police Department. So just, just so people know that.
Motion adjourned, approved. Thank you.